We don't have anything in the rules about that, so council can make it whatever time limit you like.
Okay. I just, I just wondered, I know that we have one item pulled off the consent, and I just wondered, uh-huh, that's gonna open up discussion, and I just wondered how long? That's, that's the only reason I ask.
Yeah, you could, Scott, Scott has a good suggestion, which is to make it part of the motion. If somebody decides to move to have one of the items pulled off consent, then you could say, "I moved to pull it off consent," for five minutes of discussion.
Excellent. Yep. Is that enough discussion time, Josh? You're muted.
I don't need any public discussion, I just wanted to raise a, a point on it before we voted.
Yeah, so if, if the council pulls it off, then there's, there's not necessarily any public comment.
Okay, all right. That's just a point of clarification for me, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, am I reading that correctly, that it's working now, or is that something?
We are, we are live, but the closed caption isn't on yet. She's just trying to get in now, I think she did. Is it Christina Holbrook?
Hey Scott, with all of our staff members that are listed as participants, can you have them listed as City of Des Moines staff, or what department they have, so we know how many actually attendees are with staff and with the public?
Yeah, it's a great suggestion. We had, months ago, suggested using staff dash and then their name.
That would be great.
We're ready.
I'll remind staff to do that.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
We're ready, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for your patience. It is 4:35, and prior to beginning tonight's council meeting, I'd like to extend an early happy Thanksgiving to all of our residents and all of our city employees, and each of you participating through Zoom, DM TV, or YouTube this evening. I want to say that Thanksgiving will be celebrated a little differently this year, we all know that, with families making decisions to forego traditional Thanksgiving celebrations due to COVID-19. I do want to thank the city and, and our council and everybody, because the city of Des Moines will deliver nearly 650 hot meals to our elderly, our residents that are in apartment complexes throughout the city of Des Moines this week. So we hope that will brighten up the day, and those meals will serve some of those people that are gonna miss out on it otherwise. You know, for most of us, this Thanksgiving will be much different due to that pandemic that has gripped this country and this state, and certainly our community. As we've learned over these past eight months, the coronavirus and the risks it brings will simply not dissipate through time. To emphasize that, over the last week, we have seen an additional 3,432 new COVID cases in Pope County alone. So the pandemic doesn't care if we want to return to our normal lives, or if Thursday marks an important holiday. That's why we need to be diligent in following the recommendations of our health experts. We need to reemphasize our mask mandate, and if you're celebrating Thanksgiving with family or have activities planned after Thursday, please do so safely and responsibly. Limit the size of your group and maintain social distance of at least six feet. Wash your hands frequently, and most important, wear a mask. So thank you all. One of the other things I do want to, to say to all of our citizens, this morning, we had a little glitch with Zoom that did not allow attendees to get into our council work session. And we misunderstood that the live stream was available and they could still do it. As soon as we discovered that that was not the case, we adjourned the meeting and will reconvene it from the beginning at a time to be announced. And for all those that would like to take a look at it, there is a link on the website to review that first portion of, of that workshop, of today's work session on YouTube and our website. So I would like to tell you all that those are some places, and again, we want your input, we want you to see some of the great things that have been happening. We had our citizen survey and got back some very positive information. We want you all to be aware of that. So for today, here we are on the 23rd day of November of 2020, and we'll call our city council meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take the roll.
County, excuse me, county?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Yeah.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
All right. Item two is to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved, and, voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, it passes. The next item is to approve the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 49. I, I want to also say that any member of the public who, if you have a item on the, the consent that you would like to consider to have removed, we would ask you to put your hand up, and, and we'll at least list those, and then ask the council if they would consider removing those. Also this evening, on item 38 of consent, Councilmember Mandelbaum is registered in appearance of conflict of interest. And on item 46, Councilmember Mandelbaum is gonna make a quick comment.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move item three, but do we want to, there, I see one hand up. Do we want to have her make her comment, and then we'll vote on that first? Or do I move this, Mr. Lasker?
Yeah, let's have, we've got it moved, but we'll hold it, and we'll ask that looks like Laurel Clint, Laurel? I see her hand up. Laurel?
Sorry, that was a mistake.
I'll move item three.
Okay, item three has been moved. Ask you to poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, um, let's move to, quickly to item 46. Item 46 is a purchase of two replacement large SUV public safety vehicles from Carl Chevrolet, Carl Moyer is the owner, for a State of Iowa contract for use by the fire department, eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, forty cents. Council Communication number 20-501, Councilmember Mandelbaum.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, so when I first pulled this, I had some questions about just our, our vehicle fleet, and particularly in the context of our, our broader efforts to develop a comprehensive climate action plan. I think it's important that we, we look at our vehicle fleet, and what steps we can take to transition our vehicle fleet to either a zero emission vehicle fleet, or or lower emission than current use. And part of that is just evaluating whether or not the vehicles we have are, are appropriate for the, the task needed. The fire department provided information on these particular vehicles, and, and I'm, I'm satisfied going forward tonight. But given the broader context, you know, in the last week, we've seen GM announce that they've got 30 different lines of vehicle under development that are gonna be electric vehicles. We're seeing pretty significant changes in the market, and I want us to, to make sure that we're not missing opportunities to improve the emission reduction in our fleet by just going forward with the status quo, and so I wanted to raise that in this context, and, and ask the, the manager if we could, again, start looking at our, our fleet and figuring out, figuring out the transition process in light of the, the significant changes that we're anticipating in the market, and that are coming down faster than maybe we anticipated even a year or two years ago. So with that, I'm happy to, to move item 46 and make that request of the manager, and, and I think it'd be the finance department in looking at the vehicle fleet issues.
Well, probably our motor pool.
Yeah, which falls under finance, so that's correct.
All right. Thank you. Poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, that completes our consent agenda, and it moves us to ordinances first consideration, item 50. I would like to remind our citizens that those items were public comment, you know, wasn't taken or to convey information generally to our council. We want to encourage any of you who have some thoughts to share them either with the city manager's office, or submit letters, or emails, or texts, or phone calls with additional comments or ideas to ensure that we can receive your thoughtful information and sharing of ideas, and we'll try to push them on to the appropriate areas for consideration. And I think that we will go ahead and open it up again. Item 50 is amending chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows, is the Council Communication number 20-522. A is a code change related to the 2020 HMA reservicing program contract to Cherry Street from Fifth Avenue to 12th Street. And B, a proposed code change to extend parking restrictions spacing at Sixth Avenue and Mulberry Street. Counsel, any thoughts on that one?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move 50A and B and waive the second and third reading.
Nope, you don't. All right, the item's been moved. Poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, item 51 is amending chapter 26 of the municipal code relating to the electrical code. It's the Council Communication number 20-503. Counsel, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, there's no comment, I'll move 51, and I'll waive the second and third reading upon request from the building department.
All right. Poll the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 52 is approving items regarding the annual urban renewal report, the A U R R, and tax increment finance certification. Council Communication number 20-512. A is advance of funds to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Project for Planning, Oversight, and Administration, eight hundred thousand dollars, and B is a recommendation from the city manager regarding TIF needs for fiscal year 2021 and 2022, and certification of TIF indebtedness. And C is the urban renewal reports for the urban renewal plans in areas within the city of Des Moines. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would be happy to move this item, but I would like to ask that the city manager work with economic development. We have some TIF areas, such as in the Accent neighborhood, and other areas in Ward Two that are simply not, they're not going anywhere. We're not seeing anything being done there. And I would really like to see our economic development department work to get some, some sort of development going in those TIF areas.
All right, Scott?
Yes, Mayor, I can do that.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, do we have a motion?
I did move it.
All right, good. Poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, we're gonna move on to our communications reports, and these are requests to speak from the public. And just to remind everybody, you know, all those persons wishing to speak this evening under the items on our agenda, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. So because of the number of speakers this evening, each speaker's gonna get about 55 seconds to make their comments. Please keep your own time, and because at the end of the 55 seconds, the clerks, the clerk is gonna announce time, then the speaker's mic will be closed, and we will move immediately to the next speaker. So let's go ahead and get started on this. Our first speaker is, under A is Carolyn Walker regarding clean energy resolution. Carolyn?
Your Honor, she didn't respond to me that she would make it. I got no response, yes or no. So it doesn't appear that she's here, so I would say move on to the next speaker.
Can you remind the phone, those on phone numbers how to raise their hand?
Yes, and if you're on a phone number, you need to hit star nine in order to raise your hand.
Yeah, especially if your name is called, we'd like you to have a chance to speak.
Okay, let's see if this is Carolyn. Carolyn, is that you? Carolyn?
Okay, let's move on to the next one. B is Jennifer Leatherby regarding the mental health resources. Jennifer?
There she is.
Get up.
Just a moment, I saw her, she was there.
Her hand's up.
Okay, there she is. And then got back up there. Jennifer?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hi, I'm Jen, and I use she, they pronouns. After witnessing a child who was having a mental health crisis get thrown kicking and screaming into the back of a police car, I learned that out of DMPD's 362 officers, only one is trained in mental health. Despite that, DMPD are the first responders for residents who are in mental health crisis. Police are responsible for dispatching the mobile crisis unit, which is the only emergency mental health resource available. There is only one mobile crisis unit, and it is not available overnight. Being faced with law enforcement is traumatic for those in mental health crisis. DMPD is a violent police force who has not been held accountable and continues to receive 40% of the city's tax dollars. We should reallocate police funds to support residents who need mental health care by expanding the mobile crisis unit and allowing residents to call them directly. These simple steps could save lives. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Shay Malloy regarding injustice in Des Moines. Shay?
Thank you, Counsel. My name is Shay. I use she/her pronouns. After a 14-hour meeting this August, the city council voted to approve a $99,000 ammo purchase for DMPD. For most of these weapons, it costs $25 to $100 for each discharged shot. Did you know that a propane tank costs $22, and that a decent tent costs $120? Where would the taxpayers of Des Moines rather see their money going during a national health crisis? Des Moines' houseless population has been abandoned by this council, and although you may not consider these people's needs and opinions, they live in the city you claim to represent. In case you're as blind as you are deaf, winter is here, and there are people living on the street. It doesn't matter that this 99,000 is a smaller amount than years before, it's far too much. COVID numbers are expected to peak in January, our situation is not getting better, and it is unconscionable that this council decided that violence was a bigger priority than housing, health, and safety. People still have immediate needs to be met. You are supposed to serve and represent the people you work for in this city. If their immediate welfare does not concern you, I cannot think of a greater...
All right. Under D, Louise Gomez regarding Des Moines City Council. Louise? There he is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Louise.
All right, thanks. On November 18, more than 40 homes around the Des Moines area were broken into and terrorized by local law enforcement, federal agencies, including Homeland Security Investigations, which is part of a terrorist organization funded by the federal government known as ICE. These acts terrorize and traumatize not only the families whose homes are raided, but also their neighbors and the family members. All this in the middle of a pandemic. City council and the mayor are supposed to listen and learn what is best for the community as a whole, not just what is best for business owners or profit persons and real estate developers. Working with ICE, only alienates are undocumented brothers and sisters as they learn of the dangers of interacting with police. More crimes and abuse happens without being reported, making our communities unsafe. Please keep law enforcement accountable and stop them from terrorizing our communities and families. Thank you.
Next, Eva Elaine Ayun Ryan regarding injustices in Des Moines. Eva?
Eva, if you're on a phone, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. And star six to unmute yourself.
There you go.
Eva, is that you?
Eva? Eva? Apparently not.
She's unmuted, so if it is her...
I'm, I'm sorry, this is Steve, I...
Okay, you're the wrong one.
Raised my hand too soon.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to Kate Broderick regarding injustice in Des Moines.
My name is Kate Broderick, and I use she/her pronouns. I would like to spend my 55 seconds to respond to this city's atrocious response to COVID-19. So I'm going to use this time to read some names of those who have died due to the city's inaction regarding COVID-19, in hopes that maybe then you might listen. Diane Keith Aaron's, 83, West Des Moines. Tyler Amburgi, 29, Dubuque. Edith Elida Anderson, 95, Coralville. Jose Andrade, Andrade Garcia, 62, Marshalltown. Peter Anthony Armatis, 54, West Des Moines. Jose Ayala, 44, Waterloo. Jeanette Marie Baldwin, 88, Bingo. Shirley Ray Barbieri, 88, Des Moines. Fay Ann Barr, 79, Cedar Falls. Patricia Pat Bartels.
All right, we're gonna take a break right now, we have to move to our hearings, it's 5 o'clock. And so we will do that, I want to, before the hearing items, again, try to explain to everybody for the hearings this evening, we have several zoning items, and beginning with 54, 55, and 56, items 58, and 60, and 61. We also have a vacation hearing, and then several other hearing items. We understand that at previous meetings, there's been some confusion about when the public may raise their hands on the Zoom call. So we're gonna remind the public of the rules, again, for the, the public this evening. For those zoning items only, which are items number 54 to 56, 58, 60, and 61, we will hear from the parties in interest first, and then the general public. The parties in interest include only the applicant for the rezoning, and those persons living within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned to whom the city has sent a notice. After all the parties in interest have commented, we will then open it up to any member of the public for germane comments, and by germane, we mean those appropriate to the item being discussed. To aid the city clerk in calling on parties in interest, I will ask everyone else to not raise their hand on the Zoom call unless they are the zoning applicant or live within 250 feet and received a mail notice of the rezoning. Anyone who raises their hand before it is their time will be compared with a mailing list, and if not on the list, will be considered disruptive, and you will not be recognized for the remainder of the evening tonight. So please, everybody, until I call on the general public for the zoning items, or you will not be called on for the remainder of this meeting. For those members of the general public who wait to raise their hands, they will be called on for up to a seven... they will be called on for up to a seven minutes of total germane public comment at one minute per person for all items other than 56. For item 56, there will be up to 20 minutes of public comment at two minutes per person. For other hearing items that are not zoning hearings, the public may raise their hands immediately upon me reading the item for comment, and only those that are germane to that item only. For the vacation and conveyance hearings, each is designed to allow the public to comment concerning the discontinuance of use of city property and conveyance of property interests. As the city is the property owner, the city's representative will have an opportunity to speak for up to five minutes concerning the topic, and the public will be called on for up to five minutes of germane public comment and not to exceed one minute per person. For the HUD 2019 Action Plan Amendment Hearing, any interested person may make germane comments and not to exceed two minutes per person, and we're going to allow a maximum of 10 minutes for that hearing. No public comment will be taken on item 57 as that matter is being dismissed such that no public hearing is required. For the remainder of the hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments and not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing. I want to remind all members of public that this is a council business meeting and that the council will conduct its meetings efficiently and in an orderly manner. To clarify our rules, citizen comments must be germane to this subject being considered, and I will rule on the germaneness. Arguing about any ruling, referring to other comments or to other speakers, engaging in repetitive or slanderous comments, or continuing to be non-germane even on the same item will be considered disruptive and such person will not be called upon for the remainder of the meeting. And this includes, by the way, those persons who have signed up to speak. So if you're disruptive in the meeting or adversely affect the orderliness or the efficiency of the meeting, you will not be recognized in that public speaking portion. We mentioned this last week and said that this week we're going to enforce it for the public speaking portion of that agenda, and we will instead move to the next not disqualified speaker. So sorry for that rather lengthy reading and so that everybody understands the rules. We've gone over them each time, but we wanted everybody to understand. So our first item this evening is a hearing item and it is a zoning issue. So on the request of the Highland Park Apartments LLC, Tim Bratbold is the officer to amend the plan DSM creating our tomorrow planned future land use designation from low medium density residential within a neighborhood node to a high density residential within neighborhood node and to rezone property at 622 Euclid Avenue from NX1 neighborhood mixed district to NX2 neighborhood mixed district to allow the existing multiple household dwelling to be used for 10 household living units. A is the first consideration and again, we'll open the hearing and ask counsel, do you have any comment on this?
No comment, Your Honor. If there are no other speakers, I would like to move 54A and B. Westergaard.
All right. There isn't a B, but I think what you're asking, maybe if there is any thing to wave...
Well, it looks like a B was added. I was going to ask to waive the second and third reading, but it looks like it's been added on the agenda online.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, looks like we have a one speaker. Okay, we want to parties in interest. Are there any parties in interest? All right.
Yes, yes. Alan Van Gundy is.
All right, Alan? You're on.
Alan Van Gundy with Simons and Associates Architects. Thank you for the opportunity to hear our item this evening. I'll just keep my comments very briefly. My client acquired this property as a vacant 10-unit apartment building and is basically seeking this rezoning to utilize the building for the same 10 units. I believe the current zoning classification kind of limited it to eight units, kind of in the process of acquiring the property and that change of the zoning for the city of Des Moines. So this basically just legitimizes the last two units that are in the existing complex. So with that, I just want to say I'm here to answer any questions if necessary.
All right, are there any other parties of interest or in interest? That have been notified, sent a letter? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead. Any other comments by the general public? If so, put your hand up. All right, I see one. All right, and this will be one minute per person.
Can you hear me?
That's it, go ahead.
All right, I'm going to continue commemorating COVID-19 death says. This is an important topic and it is germane as it regards to health of everyone. Patricia Pat Bartels, 86, Old Wayne. Shirley Louise Bar...
All right. Jennifer? Leatherby has her hand up. Jennifer, you're on.
Shirley Louise Barton, 75.
All right, that's disruptive. Pete? Pete Myers? Can you unmute yourself, Pete? There you go.
Pete?
Benny Ray Herman.
Pete, put him on the list.
Yep. Haley Dickens, or Dickers, I'm sorry. Haley?
I'm now going to read a statement emphasizing the horror of the pandemic from a Des Moines contact tracer.
All right. See no other germane speakers. We have a motion on item 54, I think, right, Linda?
Yes, sir, item 54A and B.
All right. Pull the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto? Joe?
You're on mute, Joe.
Sorry, yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Move item 55. It's on request from Fairway Stores Inc. Kobe Pritchard is the officer to rezon property at 2716 Beaver Avenue from MX1 mixed use district to MX3 mixed use district to allow the redevelopment of property with a 7,759 square foot retail sales, limited use with the ability to request a conditional use for a business that sells alcoholic liquor. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance. Waiver is requested by Garrett S. Picklap, who is the executive vice president and requires six votes. Let's go ahead and open it up. Counsel, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this item has created quite a bit of buzz around the Beverdale area. It's going to be going in on the southwest corner of Beaver and Urbandale at the site of the old US Bank Building that's been vacant for a little over a year and a half now, so it's an absolute fantastic fit. It fills a need, and their site plan melds in very good with the Beverdale Business District. They've met with the neighborhood group. They have met with the surrounding businesses. They've done everything right in this to get this thing going forward. We hope that this thing gets going so that we can see something here this spring. I know a lot of people are very, very interested in shopping over at Fairways, so pending hearing any comments, I'm going to move 55A and 55B.
All right. It's been moved, but let's open it up and ask if there's any parties in interest.
Your Honor, I have one that submitted their request. Oh, there's a party of an interest right now.
Hi there, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, Kobe?
Yep, Kobe Pritchard, Fairway Stores, 715 8th Street, Boone, Iowa.
All right, great. Thanks, Kobe.
Yep, just real quick, I wanted to make sure and say a couple words of, just to let, first of all, Councilman Gray, I appreciate the kind words, appreciate the support and the excitement that this project's bringing. I just wanted to make sure and tell you how excited we are about it because this meat market concept is something we've been working on for a while now, and we're really excited about bringing our, this will be our fifth standalone meat market, but also the first in the metro, so there's a lot of buzz in our office, a lot of buzz around the area. This is just something that we're excited for, and I'll let kind of the questions guide the conversation, and I'm happy to answer whatever you guys have.
All right, any other parties in interest? Parties in interest? Seeing none, let's open it up and see if there's any from the general public. Again, get one minute per person, and we're going to have a seven-minute maximum. It looks like Indira, I see you.
Your Honor, I'm sorry, but I have one request that I received by email to speak, and that person is on the line.
Is that Marty?
Yes.
All right, let's move Marty up. Marty, you're on.
Find him again. Did he go up the top?
Yes.
He's at the top, okay.
Okay, I'll find him. Marty, you can unmute yourself.
Marty, can you unmute?
He did. Yeah.
Marty?
Marty, you need to unmute yourself. You want to come back to him?
Yeah, I suppose we better. I saw Indira's hand was up first.
There we got it.
He got you, Marty. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, my computer blacked out and I couldn't get my cursor to go anywhere. I'm very sorry, these people are so interruptive. First of all, I want to talk about my ability to make this germane, and it has to do with Des Moines Municipal Code, "No liquor control license or wine or beer permit shall be approved for premises which do not conform to all applicable laws, ordinances, resolutions, and health and fire regulations." All applicable laws also means the Iowa Cannon Bottle Law. Fairway is a valuable asset to the community. We shop there, but we no longer buy beverages because we can't condone criminal activity. The law says a dealer cannot refuse to accept from a consumer any empty beverage container of any kind, size, brand sold by the dealer or refuse to refund. Any person violating this provision or rule shall be guilty of a simple misdemeanor. That's Iowa law. The Des Moines City Council will not be able to provide a liquor license or beer license to this organization or this corporation.
Okay. Indira?
Hi, this is Indira, she/her pronouns. I am speaking up against the fairway because, or the, yeah, fairway, right? Yeah, because this is a pretty prime spot. I liked what the other speaker was saying, please don't roll out non-germane about not following Iowa law, so I think you guys should push this and consider it later. But I also think this is a prime spot considering Beverdale Fall Fest happens on this block, and I would much rather have not just a meat counter at this location, but like a full-service grocery store with fresh fruit and vegetables. I also think that we need to consider the environmental impact of having a meat counter in a pretty progressive neighborhood, I think that some of you would consider. Yeah, so I'm just going to say that I don't want a fairway here. I would be welcome to any other kind of grocery store, more likely locally owned, family-owned grocery store, not a fairway.
Okay. Carter? There you go.
Thank you. My only qualm with putting in a fairway is I'm not sure if they're open on Sundays, and that seems to be a really convenient time for people to be grocery shopping. And so picking up on a previous anecdote, I'm currently engaged in contact tracing efforts in Iowa, and right now there are over 100 contact tracers working at the state level, as well as hundreds working across the state and the county level. And we're not even making a dent in reaching cases or their close contacts. It is our goal to reach people 24 hours after their COVID-19 diagnosis. Right now, we are reaching people well past...
Bridget?
Hi, my name is Bridget, she/her pronouns. Fairway makes way too much money already, like they are like loaded with money. We don't need another fairway. There are plenty of fairways in Des Moines, and I live and work in the neighborhood that this fairway meat market is going in. I have a lot of friends who live in this neighborhood. A lot of us are vegetarian. We don't really mess with meat that much, so I just, seems like another way for a corporation to just keep getting richer. I don't support it. That's all. Thank you.
Adam? Can we unmute Adam? Or Adam?
Adam doesn't have his hand raised. He's just up there because of the...
James Jones? There you go.
Hey, Frank, thanks for having me on, guys. I wanted to quickly throw out there that I think racist dog whistle expression...
Okay, Lee? Plath?
Hi, it's Leah Plath. I live in Beverdale. My pronouns are she/her. I would also like to oppose a fairway coming in here, especially a meat market. Meat has large in part awful impact on the environment, and right now we are reaching people well past their 10-day isolation period. There is such an explosion of cases right now that public health workers are unable to do their jobs.
Okay, Patton?
Hello?
Yep, you're on.
Hi, I would just like to also oppose this fairway. I would also like to ask whoever that fairway dude who was on earlier said he wanted to engage in the conversation. I just want to know if he would consider, instead of a meat... I just want to know if he would consider, um, instead of a meat store, uh, making it like some kind of vegetable or like organic, not, not organic, but like, not vegetables, maybe sell some beyond me instead, um, you know, uh, not a meat store. Um, because you know, meat is murder, um, and murder is also murder. And you know, the meatpacking plants right now are seeing large influxes in COVID. And like, you know, it's just all been a mess right there. So I really don't think that we need, you know, a meat store.
The hearing is over.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll go with my, uh, motion again. Um, like to move item 55A and 55B.
All right, call the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, please, this is item 56, which is on a request from Drake University for the amendment to the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow future land use designation from neighborhood mixed use and low-density residential to public semi-public. Review and approval of amendment to the Drake University Recreation PUD Conceptual Plan to remove approximately 2.84 acres to be, to be rezoned to P2 Public Institutional and Civic District and rezone the property from PUD Plan Unit Development District, RX1 Mixed Use District and N5 Neighborhood District to P2 Public Civic and Institutional District to allow for the development of a 4,000-seat multipurpose stadium to be jointly operated by the Des Moines Public Schools for use for athletic competition for, all for property in the vicinity of 2421 Forest Avenue. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Waivers requested by Michelle D. Morgan Huggins, Drake University Planning and Design Manager, and requires the six votes. Let's go ahead and open it up, council, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is Voss, I'd like to move 56, 56A.
Don't you know? But not B, is that correct?
Uh, well, in taking the temperature of the council, I'm not sure that 56B would, uh, pass muster this evening.
Okay.
Your honor, Matt Cohen is not a member of interest that I can see or a party of interest.
Yes, I, I believe he would represent, um.
Oh, he does, good, thank you.
Planning and design, yeah.
Didn't recognize the name, sorry.
Okay, Matt? I think you are a party in interest.
There we go, excellent. Well, I try to keep a low profile, that's probably why, uh, she didn't recognize my name. Uh, anyway, thank you all very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and members of the council. Uh, again, it's Matt Cohen, RDG Planning and Design, 301 Grand Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. Uh, also on the call are several other members of this, uh, project team, including Michelle Huggins and Ryan Arnold from Drake University, Bill Good, Darrell Gersdorf, and Dave Berger from Des Moines Public Schools, and Jason Bloom from RDG as a landscape architect. We are grateful for the opportunity to present this item, uh, for the council's consideration. Uh, we'd also like to thank the city staff for their thorough review, um, of these requests and the Plan and Zoning Commission for their recommendation. As you are aware, the items on this evening's agenda specifically relate to the rezoning, uh, of this property. Um, and we believe the proposed P2 zoning is consistent, uh, actually with the current zoning, which is, uh, Drake Recreation District, uh, PUD. Um, and is appropriate, uh, for a, a land use, uh, plan change as well. The proposed use is compatible, uh, with the uses in all directions of the property, including other recreation facilities, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, uh, and other academic buildings, commercial properties, a post office facility to the east, and residential uses. Uh, the applicant has worked closely with the Drake Neighborhood Association throughout this process and has made additional effort to communicate directly, uh, and engage, uh, residents in the media area of the property. As you all know, this is one of several regulatory steps required on this project. Therefore, we do request your support on, on this item this evening, uh, which will allow these, uh, remaining, uh, regulatory approvals to be reviewed and proceed in due process. So with that, uh, we will thank you, uh, and we are looking forward to hearing the comments from this hearing this evening. Thank you.
All right, any other parties in interest? Either from the public schools or Drake? Or individuals within, um, 250 feet who received notice? Anybody? All right, seeing none? We've got, uh, 20 minutes in on this, for those who would, uh, like to speak, two minutes per person. Let's go ahead and start with Carl. Carl? Can you unmute yourself?
Okay, can you unmute now?
Yep.
Uh, thank you. Um, just want to say thanks, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members for allowing me the opportunity to speak on this issue. I am a longtime resident of the area. I probably just live outside the 250-foot area. But I, um, have lived there since 1984 and intend to continue living there for a long, long time, till they probably carry me out. Having said that, I want to lend my support to the project. I ask that the council approves the redesignation of the zoning for this, um, property. And I am going to even ask that the council waives the future readings and make this the final reading for that project. Thank you.
Lori? Calhoun?
Hi, um, I am Lori Calhoun. I am a resident and president of the Drake Neighborhood Association. And on behalf of the Drake Board of Directors, I wanted to express our support of the rezoning for the, the, the Des Moines Public School Community Stadium. Um, we've been very appreciative of Drake's, uh, Drake University's efforts to address questions and, and concerns of the neighbors. They've been active in presenting to the, the board, um, on the plans as they've developed. And we're looking forward to the economic opportunity the stadium will bring to the neighborhood. Um, I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to speak and, and also would, uh, agree with Carl that if we could, um, also approve for future, um, ordinance waivers, waivers as well, we'd be supportive. Thank you.
Steve? Steve Walter? Can you unmute Steve?
I think you move on to the next.
Yep, let's move on to Dan. Dan Pardo?
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Terrific, uh, thank you, everybody, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council for allowing me to speak right now. Um, you have received a couple of emails from me, uh, so there shouldn't be any surprise that I would request that you vote no on this rezoning request. Um, I've spoken to a couple of city council members via telephone. And I have heard that, uh, the idea from at least one of them is that, uh, this is a zoning issue. And as long as everything is done, uh, by the rules, then it should be an automatic yes vote. Um, and I'd like to push back on that, uh, saying that it's not an unprecedented move that a city council member would vote no on a request such as this. As a matter of fact, in the last, uh, city council meeting, I'll respectfully submit that Mrs., uh, Boson, uh, voted no to her own property at 3121 Forest Avenue on a request from Casey's, uh, marketing company. And I'm assuming that they followed, uh, the rules as well. Um, so it's not out of sorts to vote no. Uh, we all know that Drake is planning on moving this property over to, uh, DMPS. And, uh, DMPS has not been forthright and honest with the taxpayers and with the people of Des Moines. Um, last year, in the summer of 2019, DMPS did not include plans for a new stadium when it submitted a five-year plan in the summer. Uh, but they, the leaders met with Drake, uh, leaders behind the backs of the school board, gave the school board 24 hours' notice before Dr. Ahart, uh, rolled out that plan last fall. Hundreds of people spoke out at those public meetings against the proposed stadium. DMPS ignored their wishes and went ahead and, uh, ruled it out anyway. 7,120 people signed a petition in less than 14 days during a pandemic to call for a public vote regarding the use of those safe funds. DMPS ignored the petition. DMPS is now in litigation regarding its refusal to call for a public vote. Yet they continue to spend that very same safe funds. They may very well be told by our legal system next November that they can't spend. This is not fiscally responsible, and I hope that you'll vote no on this, uh, to ensure the wishes of the people who elected you are respected. Thank you very much.
Alec Davis?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, uh, Alec Davis, I'm a Des Moines resident, I live at 64426th Street. I'm also the owner of Doko Pizza in the Drake Neighborhood at 24th and University. Board member for both the Drake Neighborhood Association and West Side Chamber of Commerce, and a 2003 Des Moines Public High School, Hoover High School graduate. Uh, I'd just like to speak quickly in favor of supporting the rezoning, uh, tonight for the stadium project. Um, regards to said earlier, we view the location next to the two larger athletic facilities as sensible and reasonable and in line with our strategic goals to make Dogtown a vibrant neighborhood for the arts, entertainment, and athletics. Uh, the growth and revitalization occurring in Dogtown will also mean a variety of dining and entertainment options for visiting families, and all located within a walkable distance of the stadium. And would like to reiterate that from our business and neighborhood perspective, Drake has been a willing partner in seeking our input and thoughts from both, uh, of these areas. So, just wanted to say that and apologize for the dog noise in the background.
Ida Rucker?
Hi, my name is Ida Rucker, and I'm a retired Des Moines Public Schools teacher. And I would ask you that you would, um, table this motion right now in order to do perhaps an economic impact study on the neighborhoods of the, the stadiums that we have now in Des Moines. And see if it is worth it tax-wise for these stadiums to be neglected and, and ultimately deserted because they're going to have their games in Drake. And I think Drake has already turned the property over to Des Moines Public Schools, but I'm not sure of that. So, and, and I think that's wrong, that they automatically think you have decided for them. I mean, otherwise, why would you be having this meeting? But I think it's really important to keep kids involved and invested in school by having sports. And many of the students I had at Lincoln could not afford to go to a ballgame across town. And so, they would miss out on some of the connectedness of kids to their school. Not to mention the businesses that, I know, um, the teachers and the students and all the, um, fundraisers were always going to round to local businesses to try to get support for those athletics. And if they're all at the Drake Stadium, you lose that, that fabric in each neighborhood community school. And I really know that isn't your problem, you're just trying to rezone this property. But this property does not support the number of students, the cars they would be driving, and all the other kinds of, uh, congestion that would come with all these home games being there instead of their local, um, stadiums. And I would ask you to table this motion until some kind of economic impact study could be done to see not just, not that you're gaining more taxes on the property, but you're also having the sales tax and then the local impact for these communities. Sign.
Steve Walter? Steve?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
There you go.
Oh, good, thank you. I was just wanting to speak up in opposition to this reform. I believe we have area football field. And I believe that Des Moines Public Schools would better spend their money elsewhere than a football field in the middle of Drake neighborhood. And no bias here as an insider, but I don't know how comfortable people would feel in the neighborhood in terms of their safety. The neighborhood has long been, um, known for its reputation of crime and not being a place that really you'd want to take your family. So that's my two cents.
Okay, Bridgette? Bridget Peterson?
There you go. Hi, uh, my name is Bridgette, my pronouns are she/her's. Uh, I graduated from Des Moines Public Schools in 2012. And I had like a really rough experience in the public schools. Uh, a lot of my friends had really bad experiences who graduated through Des Moines Public Schools. Teachers are not able to provide basic needs for kids in their classrooms. So I don't know why there's all, suddenly all this money for a stadium through Drake University. But I have friends who graduated from, uh, Iowa State's teaching program who are currently teaching for Des Moines Public Schools, who are on dire straits, who are unable to fund their classrooms. And the only ones speaking in support of the stadium are the people who stand to make a direct profit from it. Has, has everyone just made a general note of that? All of the people in support of the Des Moines Public School Stadium stand to make a direct profit from it, whether it's the owner of Doko, and I'm really bummed, I gotta tell all my friends to stop going to Doko now because I'm really bummed that they support the stadium. Um, yeah, I don't support the stadium at all, it's, it's a behemoth waste of taxpayer money. Des Moines Public Schools couldn't manage its way out of a paper bag. They cannot manage the stadium, scrap it.
Christopher Morris?
Thank you, Mayor, County, uh, city council members. The, for those of you that don't know me very well, I moved to Des Moines in, uh, 98 and ended up, uh, becoming a graduate of Hoover High School in 2003. When my wife and I decided to buy our first home and settle down, we intentionally chose the neighborhood that we knew had a rich sense of community and moved into the Hoover footprint. One of the reasons for that was the ability for us to go down on a Friday night and attend a football game, to meet our friends, to meet people that we had grown up with, and to have that sense of community. Every, I would imagine, every ounce of gain that will be picked up for the Drake Neighborhood will be lost in our communities, much in the same way that the sense of community from the South Side was taken away as events moved downtown, such as the Latino Heritage Festival, uh, the, um, Italian Heritage Festival, et cetera. I thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak, as many others are being silenced this evening. However, I do want to take this time to encourage you to vote no on this initiative, or at the very least, table this decision until the legal matters have been settled. Thank you for your time.
Jerry?
Yes, I would also like to ask that you, um, table this discussion for a later date. Uh, through my work, I have also heard the stories of thousands of Iowans who have shared their experiences with me. And so, of course, I have heard many. And so, of course, I have heard many cases of mild symptoms and full recoveries. But I have also heard of cases who were admitted to the hospital and never returned, leaving their spouses and families behind. I have heard of cases who have suffered extreme respiratory symptoms, high-grade fevers, and other symptoms for weeks straight with no relief. We need a mask mandate to slow the spread so public workers.
Jerry? Jerry May?
Public health workers do their jobs.
Jerry?
That's all, Your Honor. Your Honor, that's all.
Okay. Again, on the request from Drake, Carl, any final comments?
No, I believe we're ready to vote.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, a couple of points taken from our community speaking. One of the things that, in all transparency, at the beginning of the summer, I signed the petition. I, I'm not for this. I think that this is something that needed to go to a vote. Getting over 7,000 signatures during a pandemic in a two-week period, that speaks volumes to me. And I'm willing to listen. But going back to the sense of community, these stadiums have been there, and they've been dilapidated for years. I've worked with the group for the past six years of being on the council to try to renovate Lincoln High School. Mr. Good was, was kind enough to do a feasibility study for Lincoln and at least the Lincoln Stadium. It was a tremendous amount of money to do it. So it was difficult to fundraise just for the Lincoln Stadium. I understand that. But also, the schools weren't willing to put $0 into the Lincoln Stadium at that time. It was all needed to be fundraised. And I know through Grandview and through Polk County and through private donations, East was able to do that. And that would be something that, that was hopefully we were going to be able to do something like that with AIB. But of course, AIB went out of business. They're no longer a school. And so, you know, that's where we ended up at Lincoln High School. I think that this has been proven, 7,000 votes or 7,000 signatures should be at least taken in consideration by the Des Moines Public Schools. It wasn't. These are the people that I represent. These are my voters, a majority of them, so I won't be supporting this action.
Anybody else? Any comments? Council?
I have my hand up. This is Connie.
Okay, go ahead, Connie.
I am supporting this motion. Having served on the school board, I know it's been at least seven years of discussion on how we could do a joint stadium because of the cost of maintaining all of the stadiums. So it wasn't a new concept. It was something that was trying to be the most cost-effective so you could put the money from the save funds back into the buildings or to update facilities. So when you talk about, yes, East, and I am on the East High Foundation, we are going out and raising the money again, the new scoreboard, new concession stand that was just raised this and done this summer. Everything that's been done at East has been through donations. I think the original stadium was built by raising funds. Joining with Grandview has given us a distinct advantage to have the new track, new turf, and the things that everybody wants in a stadium. It would not have happened without Grandview. I believe the same thing will happen for the other stadium with joining with Drake. This is an issue for us actually of zoning. Is this a proper use of the land? I think it is a proper use based on what's around that area. And I am supporting the zoning, and I'm also supporting the stadium. But I think the question before us really is the zoning tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't get my hand up, but I agree with much of what Connie has said. I do think the issue before us is a question of zoning. And it is in the context of the Drake Athletic Complex and Drake Campus. And I think it is an appropriate use of land in that area and an appropriate rezoning request. But I do also support, I do also support the stadium. I've talked with Connie even before we were on the, on the council together about this. I've heard from folks interested in a joint stadium since I've been on the council as well. I also, you know, one of the things that I do like about this joint request, and maybe it hasn't gotten enough attention, but it's the way that they're using the saved dollars, which are limited to capital pieces. So it's saved dollars can only be spent on the capital. And in the way the agreement is structured, that's the piece that DMPS is investing in while, over the life of the agreement, Drake is operating and maintaining the stadium. That frees up critical operating budget dollars that can then be used in classrooms, which I think is something that the school district should get, should get more credit for. It's something that I've seen the school district do time over. Think about how they can strategically use those saved dollars to help reduce operating expenses. The best example that I'm familiar with is the work that the school district did on the front end when they got these saved dollars to invest in energy efficiency, where they made the buildings more habitable, more comfortable for their students and their teachers, while at the same time significantly reducing their energy costs and having a great environmental benefit. And I've seen DMPS use that type of thinking, which built, in my mind, a lot of credibility, and they deserve a lot of credit. The other piece that I want to, want to talk about is I think this is a great partnership with Drake University. And I appreciate Drake being a partner for, for our community, for our neighborhoods, and the work that they're doing, that they're doing here. I think that's a great thing for our community. And I will say, I am perfectly comfortable taking my family into the Drake Neighborhood. I think it's a great neighborhood and a great community asset. And I look forward to taking my family to games at the stadium in the future.
Okay, there were two speakers that I think we had a little trouble with getting in. And if we could give quickly Indira and Peyton, open it up, maybe two minutes each. Indira, go ahead.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, I'm speaking in opposition of this stadium, and there are a lot of reasons. Taking resources out of our neighborhoods is not helping anyone in the Hoover area, the North area, or the Lincoln area. I graduated from Hoover. I signed this petition. I know a lot of people who are extremely passionate about this. And it is absolutely disgusting that you guys are planning on building a stadium when there is literally litigation in the process that's going to be decided in a year, like further out than a year from now. And what happens if this stadium has, is built, or any part of the stadium is built, and the DMPS loses their litigation suit? $15 million of save funds will be going to Drake because they get the stadium. So that is an absolutely financially irresponsible move. Also, a lot of my opposition from this came from a couple of articles I read, one of which was authored by Akio Abdul Samad and Connie Bozen, which said that this is a good thing because there are a lot of immigrants who go to these schools, and they bring their love of soccer with them. An absolutely disgusting comment that made me literally physically sick. And it really angers me that that's how you're looking at the people in my neighborhood. I also want to remind you that a lot of people live across the street from the stadium at Hoover, live in the neighborhood, who walk to school every single day. They won't be able to do that anymore. There was another article that said it's fine that we're sending these kids to the Drake Neighborhood, like miles away from where they live because DM, like the Des Moines buses are free for students. So we're going to be sending 14-year-olds, 13-year-olds, 12-year-olds, 11-year-olds on buses by themselves across the city to an area near downtown, which I am not afraid of sending anyone to the Drake Neighborhood, but I'm afraid of sending kids out on public buses by themselves because, to go see their friends play soccer or football or anything. I also want to remind you that this is four schools now who are going to be trying to play Friday night football on the same night, which just means a lot more away games, a lot more money going to suburbs when people are traveling out.
Okay, I think we've got time for Peyton. Peyton?
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to say I agree with all of the opposition that has been said about this. I also wanted to just point out that, you know, I know that it's been said that this is just a zoning issue, so we should only be talking about the zoning part of it. But also, the person who said that, Connie, also spent a lot of time talking about the stadium itself. So I just don't understand why if this is purely a zoning issue, you would be talking about your support of the stadium. If this is clearly like just a zoning issue, then just talk about the zoning. But the thing is, that's not what it is, because in this whole thing, it also says that the zoning is for this stadium specifically. Like, it's not just saying we're rezoning this so that something can go there eventually. It's for this stadium. And as Indira said, if we lose this litigation with the petition, then all of the money that we've spent on this, because I know that Drake has put in some money, but most of the money for this project is coming from the save funds. And you're talking about how this is a great use of funds and everything, but if we lose the litigation, which is definitely possible, looking at all the things that have happened, you know, with the petition. If we lose that, then all of that money just goes right into Drake. And I also want to point out again that all the people who are speaking in support of this are people who have direct interest in this going through, you know, like they would make money. The Doe Person, I don't remember what that place is called, but he would make money by more people being in this area. I also wanted to again say that, you know, we shouldn't be sending kids on buses by themselves. Like, this is just really a way to take people away from their home schools. And the people who go to these schools don't want this. Like, all these people signed this petition. They don't want this. Like, if you really want what's best for your community, then you would listen to the people in the community that you are directly harming, not the people who would benefit from this. And that's all I have to say.
All right, I think our time is up. Carl, any final comment?
No, I think we're ready to vote, Mayor Connie. Thank you.
All right. Hold the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westegard?
No.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto? Gatto?
No.
Your Honor, that's five yes, two no. Motion carries.
Okay. Let's move on. Item 57. Item 57 is a quick vote to dismiss a hearing on a request from Quick Trip Corporation. Jessica Glava is the officer for rezoning property at 1421 Ingersoll from MX2 mixed-use district to MX3 mixed-use district to allow the existing 4,008 square foot fuel station with 10 fueling locations the ability to request a conditional use for a business that sells alcoholic liquor. Again, that's dismissing this hearing. Counsel, any comments?
Well, I will move item 57. I appreciate Quick Trip dismissing this item. I know it came up at least once before I was on the council, and now this time, I hope it's been met with very strong neighborhood and other stakeholder opposition in the nearby area. So I hope that that's taken into account and that we don't have to face this issue again in the near future. So appreciate that, and we'll move item 57.
All right, any other comment, counsel? This is dismissing this hearing, so there really is no public comment on this one. Would you hold the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westegard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 58. Did you correct the conditions of the limited II zoning approved pursuant to ordinance number 15,930 on October 5th of 2020 regarding property located at 2025 East Brand Avenue? The original zoning request was submitted by Little Brother Construction LLC, who's the purchaser, and Jean Jones, who's the officer. The subject property was owned by Cypress Properties LLC. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Let's go ahead and open that up. Joe, do you have any comment on this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This, Jean, and Jean Jones is the officer and owner of the company. She's worked with the neighborhood, and they are very excited to have Little Brother Construction move into the neighborhood. I would be happy to move 58A and waive the second and third reading so they can get going on this. I know this has been a long time coming. I think we started talking about this early in the summer, and they're excited. And actually, at one of the neighborhood meetings, they asked me when they were going to get started. So happy to get this moving. This is a great asset to the neighborhood.
Okay, okay. Any other comment on this one? Any public comment on this one? I'm sorry. Parties in interest. I'm sorry. Any parties in interest? Is Millie Umbridge a party in interest?
I don't see them on the list.
Ask her. She's got a couple on her. See if she's with them.
Let's, let's open up and ask her. Millie?
I'm a public speaker.
Okay, I have to remind everybody, we want parties in interest first.
I know. I was just clarifying for you.
Okay, it seems there's no parties in interest here. Let's go ahead and let's open public. Any public speakers? Steve Walter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to speak in favor of this proposal and absolutely would keep development on your side. Thank you.
Giovanni? I think you're open, Giovanni. Giovanni? All right, so let's move on to Millie. Millie? Millie, you're open.
Hi, my name's Millie. I use she/her pronouns. We need a mask mandate to slow the spread so public health workers can do our job.
All right. I think, uh, we're done with public input.
You're going to call the vote?
It looks like we have one more. This will be the last one. Lillian?
Hi, that's, uh, Lily Nellens, pronouns she/her. We need action like a mask mandate and so much more on COVID, so ordinary healthy people are not left with.
Okay. Let's call the, uh, the item. Joe?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'd just be happy to move fifty-eight and fifty-eight A, and I would like to waive the second and third reading, please.
Okay. Uh, hold the council, please. Motion's made.
County?
Yes.
Bosin?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item fifty-nine, which is on the vacation of the east-west alley right-of-way located north of and adjoining eight oh nine Virginia Avenue, and for the vacation of the north-south alley right-of-way located west of and adjoining eight oh nine Virginia Avenue, and the conveyance to Diana Ensel for two hundred dollars is the first consideration of the, uh, the ordinance above. Let's go ahead and open it up, uh, counsel. Any, uh, any comments here?
Uh, no, but I I will happily move item fifty-nine, uh, A, and, uh, move to waive the second and third reading, uh, after we have our public comment.
All right. Yeah, item has been moved, uh, council has spoken, but let's open it up and see if there's any, uh, public comment on this vacation near eight oh nine Virginia Avenue.
There are none, Your Honor.
All right. Would you hold the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bosin?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item sixty, which is on a request from Des Moines Cold Storage, uh, which is the owner CJ Morton is the officer for the review and approval of an amendment to the previously approved PUD, uh, final development plan for the phase, uh, one A of Des Moines Cold Storage for property located at thirty-eight oh five Vandelia Road to allow a sixty-two thousand six hundred and eighty square foot addition to the existing refrigerated warehouse building with a waiver of the previously approved installation of public sidewalk along the Vandelia Road frontage. Let's go ahead and open that up. Counsel, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I I can make a comment. Um, obviously, uh, Des Moines Cold Storage is invested in our community. Um, if anybody's been down there, it's been it's been fantastic to 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 watch their growth. Uh, if you haven't had an opportunity to tour it, I would suggest all the council members to, uh, take a look at it. Um, their their company is is doing great things, and they're moving jobs into the city of Des Moines. When this went through, um, the initial review process, it did have a sidewalk in there, but it's a sidewalk to nowhere. That there's no connectivity at all down there. It's strictly industrial area. And, um, as as we move forward, um, I I think that that's that there's there's not a need for it right there. So I will move, um, as it as it states, um, item sixty.
All right, sixty's been moved. Uh, let's quickly ask, are there any parties in interest? Those are either the applicant or those that, uh, have been noticed that, uh, have property within two hundred and fifty feet of this particular property. And, uh, they'll be given up to five minutes to speak. Are there any of those? Any parties in interest? Seeing none, let's move on to, uh, general, uh, comments from the general public. And, uh, we're going to allow, uh, for those who would like to speak, uh, one minute per person, and we're going to have at least seven minutes, uh, or up to seven minutes maximum. Anybody want to speak on this, Des Moines Cold Storage? Can you unmute yourself, Jelisha?
Hi, sorry, that was an accident.
No, you're good. Go ahead.
No, like, uh, raising my hand was an accident.
Clarine Corwell, can you unmute yourself?
Hello, my name is Clarine. On regards to Des Moines Cold Storage, it's an easy step that could save the lives and prevent loss of well-being for thousands. It's not hard to make the compassionate choice. Gerald Jean Bluebaugh, eighty-eight Des Moines. Michael Mike Bluebaugh, sixty-five Des Moines. Carol Jean?
Thank you. Freedom? Vacant?
James F. Bosin, eighty-seven Des Moines. Rinalle J. Bonner?
Sky Jones?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Donna Bermanshire, eighty-six Ames.
Thank you. Randy Schumaker?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, uh, some people might be in opposition to it if they're still around. Kenneth Eugene Bratney, Darla Island.
Liz C. Liz?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, Kyle Brown, fifty-four.
I think that's it.
Mayor, I went ahead and moved item sixty.
Item sixty has been moved. Would you, uh, hold the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bosin?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item sixty-one, this is on a request from the Blank Park Zoo Foundation. And Shimer Duh, uh, is the officer for the, uh, third amendment to the Blank Park Zoo PUD conceptual plan to allow for addition of a new restroom and concession building with Plaza within Area A and the PUD final, uh, development plan for the Go-Go Plaza to allow development of a fifteen hundred and four square foot concession and restroom building surrounding Plaza Area F seventy-four oh one Southwest Night. Let's go ahead and, uh, open that up.
Mr. Mayor, um, this is a great project, especially during the last eight months that we've had, that they're considering, uh, the growth and and as we go forward, um, looking at, uh, being able to to accommodate more guests um, with what they've got. So I I'm happy to move item sixty-one.
Okay. Carl, do you have a quick?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think Joe's comments are spot on. This is going to be a welcome zoo addition, and it's completely funded. And I encourage the other council members to vote yes on this addition.
Um, I first ask if there's, uh, parties in interest, uh, um, either the applicant or those within two hundred and fifty feet of the property. And we're going to give up to five minutes to speak, and second, then we'll see if there's any public. So we'll start with, uh, again, these are parties in interest, either from the applicant or those within two hundred and fifty feet. All right, I'm presuming that Nikki Neal is, uh, a party in interest. Nikki, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I just want to say thank you, Mayor, members of council, for hearing this item. I am with Civil Design Advantage. We are the engineers on the project. Um, obviously, the zoo is so excited to be moving this project through, and I just wanted to say we are here to answer any questions. And we appreciate, thank you to the staff. They've been wonderful to work with, so.
Nikki, thanks for your comments. Uh, any, uh, council have any questions for Nikki? All right, thank you, Nikki. Uh, let's move on to Jelisha Johnson. Party in interest?
Hi, my name, can you, can y'all hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
You're a party in interest, correct?
Yeah, my name's Jelisha. I actually grew up in the apartments across the street from the zoo, and I think that it's a really important place for young kids. But I think what's more important is that people are dying, like Joe Bunken, ninety-three in Waterloo.
Okay. Are there any, uh, general public folks? Louise Witt?
Hi, yes, thank you. I think there are a lot of people who'd want to visit the zoo, the zoo, like Siddika Bulich, fifty-eight Waterloo.
Okay, Carl McPherson?
Thank you. I just want to say I support the zoo project and I encourage, um, forward movement on this. Thank you.
Levi? Levi? Yeah, I think you just remuted yourself, Levi. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're Levi?
Yeah. Can I speak?
Yep, you're Jermaine to the Blank Park Zoo.
Um, I just wanted to say that I love Blank Park Zoo, and that the whole time that we've been discussing this, I've been wondering how you guys can live with yourselves with murdering a bunch of people and how you can just constantly mute people. That is so disgusting, and I hope you all stay awake at night, and I don't even understand how you can live with yourself. Thank you.
Uh, Rebecca?
Hi, my name is Rebecca. In regards to the Blank?
Yeah, Rebecca, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Hi, in regards to the zoo project, I am now going to read a statement by a constituent who has dealt with the virus firsthand. On March seventeenth, twenty twenty, my two daughters-
All right, that is irrelevant to this. Denver Foot?
Hi, my name's Denver. She/her pronouns. Um, I just have a comment regarding the zoo, as I also was thinking about the, uh, stadium. Uh, why are we expanding the zoo or adding to the zoo when we should be having people quarantine while there's a pandemic going on within our city? And Iowa has one of the worst coronavirus responses. We should be, uh, keeping people, you know, at home, social distancing, uh, not out looking at animals. That just seems redundant and stupid, in my opinion. Um, and I yield my time.
Jermaine? Hello? Yep. Hello? Okay, let's move on to Bridget. Bridget?
Hi, uh, this is Bridget. Pronouns are she/her's. Um, I've been thinking a lot about the Blank Park Zoo and, um, all that needs to be done to maintain it and expand on to it, and gosh, that's that sounds like a really big problem that needs solved. Um, Zachary Scott Overe of North English Iowa was a passionate problem solver who passed away from COVID, um, because-
Okay, I think that's it.
I moved it, Mayor.
All right, hold the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bosin?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries. Sorry.
Item sixty-two, which is on the conveyance of city-owned property located at nine nineteen East Ninth Street to Home Inc., home opportunities made easy incorporated for redevelopment of housing. Go ahead, we'll open it up. Any, uh, anybody? Joe?
I'll move. I'll move item sixty-two.
Yeah, yeah, this is Westergaard. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Linda. It's your ward.
Yeah, no, it's just a great, it's just a great project, and I'm delighted that Home Inc. is, uh, still reinvesting in our neighborhoods. They build a great house. They provide counseling, uh, for first-time home buyers. They just have a long list of really good things that they do, and and it's it's a pleasure to have them in our neighborhood, and I thank them for being in our neighborhood. And with that, I think- for being in our neighborhood. And with that, I think Connie moved it, but I wanted to make those comments.
All right, with a strong second. Thanks, Linda. Let's go ahead and we ask for general public comments. One minute per person, up to five minutes. And Colo.
Hello, Colo Chanel. She/her-they pronouns. Was just wondering if Home Inc. is keeping the same energy when it comes to housing folks in the community. As we know, we are still in the middle of a pandemic. And even though there was a moratorium for evictions, people are still facing evictions. So I was wondering if they are keeping that same energy when it comes to decreasing the houses rates in Des Moines.
Gerald.
Can you hear me?
Quinn Noble.
Hi, my name's Quinn. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, in regards to Home Inc., Kay had mentioned that they provide, provide counseling for new homeowners. People will also need counseling from the response that you guys have had for COVID on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty.
Bella.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to bring a point of order to the council and remind you all that the rule, the official rule, your rule that you wrote, is that you have to let a speaker finish before you comment or rule on whether the comment was Jermaine. So you're not supposed to be cutting people off. You are supposed to be letting us finish our time and finish our comment before you let us know if it's Jermaine or not. Do you understand?
What? Two. Gerald.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thomas Snappy Catrin, Richard Allen.
Steve.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. In regard back to the topic at hand, I reiterate the Westergaard support for home development on the U.S. side and look forward to what Home to bring for. Thank you.
Chris Johnson.
Richard Allen Chamney, sixty-five. Marvel Chapman, seventy-four. Steven Joe.
Jermaine.
All right, I think that's it. We have a motion on nine-nineteen East Ninth, Home Opportunities Made Easy for redevelopment of housing. Call the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item sixty-three is on the proposition to authorize and enter into a lease agreement in the principal amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for the purpose of acquiring certain items of equipment for winter snow removal consisting of three motor graders and one bulldozer. Council Communication Number twenty-five-hundred. Let's go ahead and open it up. But council, any comment here?
Mayor, I'll move item sixty-three.
All right, item sixty-three has been moved. We'll ask the general public if they have any comment on snow removal and three motor graders and bulldozer. All right, call the question. Call the council. Kay? Call the council.
I think. County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item sixty-four is on the amendment to the two-thousand-and-nineteen Action Plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD and the two-thousand-and-fifteen-to-nineteen Consolidated Plan. Let's go ahead and open it up. Council, any comments?
I'll move item sixty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make a couple of comments.
Yes.
And I just am pleased and I, I just hope that our citizens understand the food program. You know, we delivered more than forty-eight, uh, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact number, four thousand meals this summer to people that needed food. And now during the Thanksgiving, I know that we received an email earlier today that under the leadership of Chris Johansson, we're going to deliver some Thanksgiving meals to some of our public housing and, and our HUD properties. So we're doing some really good things in the city.
All right, thanks, Linda. All right, let's go and ask the general public. We have two with their hands up. And we're going to allow two minutes per person and ten minutes max on this. Let's start with Maura. Maura Terry.
Hello?
Hello? Yes, we can.
I'm wondering what this item does for COVID for people who died, like Ruth Clark, one-hundred-and-two, Des Moines. Terry Lynn Clark, six.
Colo.
Mayor, it's Chris next.
Chris?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Ruth Clark, one-oh-two, one-hundred-and-two, Des Moines. Terry Lynn Clark, sixty-one.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Mary Beth. Roger Coe, eighty-six, New Sharon. Mary.
And Jermaine.
Colo. Colo.
Brad? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor. I want to just go back to a point that Linda, you brought up, kind of, kind of introducing this agenda point, highlighting some of the contributions that y'all have made with meals to people who need them in the community. That's a great first step. I hope that we can look into ways to, you know, provide some more meals to folks in the community who are actually already houseless. I just like really quickly have a suggestion for that would just be to like look into some of the existing mutual aid groups in the community. Like donating money or resources to them like be a really good step because you know, they're already doing the work there for some of our members who need it the most. And like, just like a really quick, also like a point to some of like my fellow community members on here. Mayor, County is asking for us to like keep our comments Jermaine. Like what that means is like staying relevant to the points that are coming up on the agenda. That, of course, would like require us to be following the rules, which is, you know, what he didn't do this morning when he held in the legal meeting over thirty minutes, you know, this morning during the work group. So just keep that in mind that, uh, we have rules to follow and City Council doesn't have to follow any. Yeah.
Lila Waller.
Mary A. Cole, ninety-three, Cedar Rapids. Keith Danny Conrad.
And Jermaine.
Lila Waller. Lay.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Darren Elkook, fifty-seven, Atlantic. Raymundo Correll, sixty-four.
Jermaine, thank you.
Brad Dixon.
Hi, I had a quick question. Who rules on the Jermaine-ness of comments, the city clerk or the mayor?
The mayor.
Oh, okay, great. Um, so my comment, I hope that you will rule Jermaine. J.S. Daniels, ninety-two, West Des Moines. Ruth David, ninety-one, Ames. John DiMarco, seventy-three, Coralville. David N. Dante, eighty-four, Forest City. Patricia Dorn, eighty-eight, Runnels. Jordan L. Dyer, senior, seventy-eight, Atumwa. Bob Iroh, eighty-six, Centerville.
Okay, that's it. Do you have a motion? On the two-thousand-and-nineteen Action Plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the HUD Consolidated Plan.
Connie moved it.
Yes, we had a motion.
All right, it's been moved. Would you call the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixty-five, it's on the amendment to the donation concession agreement to for Riverview Park concession with Parks Area Foundation. Council Communication Number twenty-five-oh-eight. Let's go ahead and open that up.
Uh, Westergaard will move that item if there are no comments.
All right, council, anybody? All right. Call the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item sixty-six, on the two-thousand-and-twenty-one traffic signal replacement contract, one approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, and engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designate the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Iowa Signal, Inc. Wayne Leslie is the president, four-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Council Communication Number twenty-five-sixteen is to approve the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Council, any comments?
I'll move item sixty-six and sixty-six A.
All right. We'll see if there's anyone in the public who has any Jermaine comments. Tilly?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Tilly. Julie Ebbell, forty-four, Hartley. Carleen Suzanne Edwards, sixty-eight, Cedar Rapids. Abby Irene Ekman, thirty-six, Des Moines. Edson, ninety-four, Forest City. Kathy Jo Everett, sixty, Fairfax.
Kay.
Michael Everhard, sixty-five.
Hi, Lay. Okay, Eva.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Ava Liu. And I use she/her-they them pronouns. Judith Ann Fetters, eighty-two, of West Des Moines. Robert Michael Flanders, sixty-three, from Muscatine.
Hi, Lay. Kay, hi, Lay Boldridge. I think he's okay, too. Go ahead. Dee? Dee, you're open.
Hi, this is Harley Boldridge. Can you hear me?
Harley, yep, we got you.
Great. I'm just thankful to have time to speak since this isn't the first time I've tried to get on a Jermaine comment space or the general public on some of these items. And unfortunately, I have not been allowed to speak, even though I do have Jermaine comments. So my question about this is if this is an approval to also sublet that Iowa Signal Incorporated so that they could then sublet the bid to another company, or if this is to actually allow Iowa Signal to do the work. Thank you.
Lay Waller? No. Joy Smith?
Hello?
Joy?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say that with regards to the traffic signal, I think that as long as it's good for all of the people in the city and people in Iowa, because I think it's important to hold space for everyone. And I want to hold space for Joseph Robert Fouts, fifty-seven. Glenn William.
Pepper, please? Daniel, you're open.
Hi, can you hear me? Uh, thank you for your time, Frank and fellow city council members. I, I actually work for Iowa Signal Incorporated. And I just, I'm surprised no one's reached out to y'all yet because we were planning to do this work, but all of my employees died of COVID-nineteen. And I don't know how we're going to get this work done because there's nobody to do the work now. What do you, what?
Chelsea? Chelsea?
Hi, yes, good evening, Mayor, County, and Council. This is Chelsea Chisholm-Vargas. My pronouns are she/her/they. I want to speak on sixty-six. I wanted to also say, I have two colleagues that are attempting to speak at the council meeting, but they just got skipped when their name was called. Colo and Jelisha haven't had the opportunity to speak and keep getting skipped. I heard their names whispered in the background and then I never heard them.
Do you have anything regarding the two-thousand-and-twenty-one traffic signal replacement contract?
Yes, thank you. Please do allow them to speak. Judy Fuller, seventy. Yes, thank you. Uh, please do allow them to speak. Uh Judy Fuller, seventy.
We're on time.
The hearing is done.
Okay. All right, item sixty-six, the twenty twenty-one traffic signal replacement. We have a motion, I think.
Yes, Gatto.
All right, call the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item sixty-seven, on the Center Street Park and Ride Lighting Improvements. Approving the plan specification form of contract documents and the engineer's estimate. Receiving file of bid designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder is ABC Electric Turbines LLC Leroy Blair is the president. Six hundred and eighty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-four cents. Council Communication number twenty-five seventeen A is the approval of the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Council, any uh?
I'll move item sixty-seven and sixty-seven A.
All right, sixty-seven, sixty-seven A. Unless there's any other comments. We'll go ahead and uh open it up uh to the general public for germane comments regarding the Center Street Park and Ride Lighting Improvement. Looks like John Leesner.
Hi, I want to make sure I'm speaking on the right item. It's the Center Street Park and Ride Lighting Improvements. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is John.
This is John. Um, yeah, so I actually would prefer that the the rides not be relighted uh because I think my priorities are are more on Blas Chavaria Garcia, forty-eight Marshalltown, Reveriano Garcia, forty-eight Waterloo, Sean Elaine Gillen, forty-four Burlington.
Wada?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to first off request that Mayor County refrain from yelling as I am a survivor of domestic violence and your yelling causes triggers for me. I am now shaking with anxiety.
Do you have any? Street Park and Ride.
Wow, you're really inconsiderate. So John Z. Gomez, seventy Mason Joyce Gold, sixty-three West Des Moines, Genevieve M. Gray, ninety-one Evan.
Germane. Elly Ravens.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Adrian Eugene Doolan Howard, seventy-five Cedar Rapids, Dorothy May Hubert, ninety Salix, Amy Anne Scanell, Huxell, ninety-three Iowa.
Sandy Smith?
Hello? Hello?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to say in regards to this item, uh I know that someone would want to speak about this who isn't on the meeting. Dorothy Irene Eisenmeier, ninety-three Des Moines, Katie G.
I think now. We're done. Let's go ahead and call the question. Call the county. Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, that moves us to item sixty-eight. Which is on the Drake Park Shelter renovation, approving the plan specifications form of contract documents and engineer's estimate receive and file of bids and designate the lowest responsive responsible bidder is GTG Construction LLC Tracy D. Grasso is the owner and managing partner. Seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Council Communication number twenty-five eighteen A is approving uh the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Go ahead and open it up. Council, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd uh like to move item sixty-eight and sixty-eight A. The Parks Department really does a fantastic job with the shelter renovations. Uh, I think this is going to be the the fourth. Uh, I think the fourth one, uh maybe the fifth. Uh, we've got Columbus Park was the most recent, McCray Park, uh Greenwood Park, and these are uh really well-used shelters. It's a great, great amenity and great improvement to this neighborhood park. Excited to to see it happen uh and look forward to to taking my family to to use this park once uh once this is done and 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 things are open back up.
All right. Any other uh comments, council?
Carl's hands up.
All right, Carl, go ahead.
Oh, it just is terrific to have this project go on in an invest DSM neighborhood. This would be a a really nice infusion of additional improvements. Thank you.
Okay, um this is a great project and uh good comments by council members. Let's see if there's any germane comments by the general public. Harley? Or Harley? Boldridge?
Yes, hi, this is Harley Boldridge. Um she/they pronouns. I just wanted to um say that I support the idea of keeping our public spaces looking nice and available for public use. I think this is a drastic change from item fifty-six, which was about privatizing things for Des Moines Public School students and putting that in our money, our taxpayer money into the hands of a private um college such as Drake. So I just like the idea of um us being able to make Drake neighborhood something that everyone can enjoy um and those people in that neighborhood to keep that neighborhood strong. Thank you.
James Grimm. Dave? Dave?
Yes.
You're on.
Yes, um uh regarding Columbus Park, I the name of that park needs to be changed. Um it's named after a mass murderer and there's a lot of children of native descent that play in that park.
Playing in. Drake Park?
What?
Drake Park, that's the item on the agenda.
Okay, well, I'm talking about Columbus Park.
The item uh for comment is regarding Drake Park Children, the renovation that they're doing up there. Any comment about that? Bura?
Hello, my name's Vera. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, in regards to Drake Park Shelter renovation, Katie G. Jacobs, ninety-six Council Bluffs, June Marie J. Mel, ninety-two Des Moines, using fifty-six.
All right, let's call the question. Call the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion.
All right, that takes us to item sixty-nine. On the Hamilton Drain Drain Storm Water Improvements Phase One, proving his plan specifications form of contract documents and engineer's estimate and receiving the file of the bids and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder is SM Hitchens and Sons Inc. Stephen Hitchens is the president. Two million one hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. Council Communication number twenty-five nineteen A is to approve the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Council, let's open it up. Any um comments regarding that Hamilton uh storm drain?
Mr. Mayor, this is Westergaard and this is a really good project. It's going on uh in an older part of our neighborhood. This project is going to reduce the flooding that homeowners have had uh with water coming up into their basement. So it's it's a it's a great project and I'm thankful that we're uh this far along in the process. And with that, I would move uh to approve item sixty-nine and A.
All right, thank you.
Sixty-nine A.
All right. Any other comments, council? All right, it looks like we have Lucy Hamilton.
Hello, this is Lucy Hamilton, she/her. Um, yeah, I really agree. I I don't like having water coming in my basement. Um, and I I think this is a problem a lot of people deal with, including John Steve Jensen, seventy-four Sioux City, Daryl Jass, eighty.
All right, John Franks, John?
Hey, can you hear me?
We got you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so uh yeah, I I just think this is a good move. I think we always need more storm water, especially in this area. I live in this area. Um, but really just wanted to mention other people that have issues with this, like Leonard Johnson, eighty-nine Tama, Kenneth Kenny Jones, sixty in Storm Lake.
Move on to Nancy Frown.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello, yes, I agree with the storm water management because I believe that the flooding in our basements can really destroy our lives in the same way that COVID destroys our lives. Like John Alan McMerchi, seventy-six, Janice L. McNelly, seventy-nine.
Move on.
Jim Loa Miller, junior.
Ray?
Well, hello, can you hear me?
Ray, we can hear you.
Hi, in regards to Hamilton Drain Storm Water Improvements, Jean Morrison, ninety-six Clear Lake, Wanda M. Mullin, ninety-four Des Moines.
Move on to Josie. Josie Lane.
Patricia Pat Craven Mulville, ninety-nine, Melinda Moody, five fifty.
All right, I think that's it. Call the question and call the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, let's note that the hearings are at an end at six fifty-seven. This will take us back to item G on the request to speak, this one from Adam Callanan regarding injustice in Des Moines. Is Adam on?
Hello, can you hear me?
Is Gatto?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, well, I just wanted to say my name is Adam Callanan. I use he/hem pronouns. Uh, there's been a lot of hostility towards folks that are coming on to you know commemorate COVID victims tonight, which is the ongoing crisis that's affecting all of our lives. Um, and obviously impacts all of these issues. Uh, I just want to point out that this treatment is really weird because when folks do things the right way, as council suggests, even if you get over seven thousand signatures, um we've seen a council still doesn't care and will just ignore you. Also wanted to call attention to that this morning, city council, mayor, county decided to hold an illegal meeting without the public. Not a single member of council objected to this meeting. A failure to use Zoom competently, a tool used by children for school, does not make it okay to hold illegal meetings. The city attorney and the mayor are trying to push a cover-up claiming they thought there was a YouTube stream. We know the city staff did not think there was a YouTube stream because we called them and nobody mentioned YouTube stream existed. Nobody thought that existed until the city attorney made it up. You are willing to allow.
Okay, next, uh we're going to move to I. Stephen Walter regarding the opposition to criminal decriminalizing marijuana in the future of Des Moines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm concerned with the so-called rednecks that have been made to the council in terms of telling the police to look the other way when it comes to marijuana possession. This is not the future that we want for Des Moines. When you tell the police to look the other way, that's nothing more than corruption. And when people suggest that the council take authority to tell the police what to do, that it's not theirs, that is tyranny. And so I don't think these suggestions are anything more than corrupt tyrannical suggestions and that they should be totally rejected. And we should build a brighter future for Des Moines by increasing graduation rates and by also increasing property values in our city that is free from the blight and the scourge of drug use. Drug dealers are nothing more than slaveholders, people that are chained to addiction.
I'm.
All right, we're going to move on to Alejandro. Um, I want to say that uh there were a a number of speakers. Speaker H uh and O and T V, W, Z, and double E uh were all disruptive during our uh meeting and as we went through our rules earlier, they will be uh they have been disqualified for speaking uh this evening. Let's move ahead. Alejandro Ortiz. Regarding violence reduction in Des Moines, Alejandro?
Thank you. Um, I had to change my topic because last week the MPD collab collab in collaboration with multiple federal agencies conducted one of the most irresponsible and traumatic PR stunts that many of us have witnessed. These raids were a waste of resources and created mass trauma among hundreds, if not thousands, of immigrants and refugees, not only here in Des Moines, but throughout the state. We've heard about students crying to their teachers because they thought their their father would be taken away from them. We heard from entire congregations coming together to pray with each other because word had spread that immigration agents were raiding our communities. We talked to the neighbors of one of the raided houses and they told us they couldn't tell if these plainclothes militarized agents were local police, ICE, the DEA, or just a racist militia wreaking havoc. These this type of irresponsibility would be a fireable offense in any real job. And I can express everything that our community is feeling right now in under fifty-five seconds, but please connect with congregation.
Time.
Next speaker is Harvey Harrison regarding the Marijuana Task Force report. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to express my appreciation to the Marijuana Task Force for their work. They have presented to you a series of recommendations that are specific and doable. A failure by the council, the city manager, and the chief of police to move forward expeditiously would be a statement by you and them of an intention to take no action, and that will be unacceptable. It's now been two years since Iowa CCI submitted the six-point community initiative to this council. It took the murder of George Floyd, thousands of Des Moines citizens in the streets that led to the first steps that you have taken. You must now embrace and adopt the recommendations of the task force. And if the city manager and the chief of police, your employees, and the chief of police, your employees, refuse to stop interfering in this process, it is your job to terminate their employment.
Move on to Jane Alderman, regarding Marijuana Task Force. Jane?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Jane Alderman, from the CCI Racial Justice Team. We are very concerned that Chief Wingert says he won't abide by marijuana enforcement changes. Why didn't he respond to the Marijuana Task Force as he was asked multiple times? His concerns may have been resolved. Chief Wingert decided the concerns of the citizens, the people he is to serve and that pay his salary, and the city council, his ultimate boss, can be ignored. He is also sabotaging the conscientious work of the task force. Council and city manager, you need to hold him accountable. We are requesting a meeting with council members Mandelbaum and Gray, mayor, county, and chief Wingert on December fifteenth at five thirty P M. to discuss the findings of the task force.
Time. Laurel Clinton, regarding the Marijuana Task Force. Laurel?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Laurel.
Thank you so much. Since November third election, five more states now allow the use of medical and/or recreational marijuana. Several cities have adopted similar ordinances, even when their state and the federal have it. We've shared stories, data, and solutions on the crim- how the criminality of marijuana negatively impacts the black community. I'm asking you to disregard the comments made by Chief Wingert to Des Moines Register, since he has repeatedly declined to participate with the Marijuana Task Force or to meet with the community members that it impacts. It is time for the Des Moines City Council to make the necessary changes recommended by the Marijuana Task Force to make the city of Des Moines equitable and fair when it comes to the marijuana arrests by lowering the priority for personal and small quantity uses, and I thank you.
Move on to Janice Hawkins, regarding the Marijuana Task Force recommendations.
All right, hello, you can hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great, thank you. Hello, my name is Janice Hawkins, I'm a member of the CCI's Racial Justice Team, and I'm here to express concerns about Chief Wingert's dismissive attitude and lack of participation and discussion around policing policies. He has dismissed the Marijuana Task Force recommendations, telling the press, if the recommendations were brought forth are truly the will of the people. Well, the task force was appointed by you, the council, and the result, as a result also of CCI's work on racial profiling. They, these people are expressing the will of the people. You know, when Chief Wingert was promoted in twenty fifteen to that position, he was described as very approachable, willing to talk with anyone, and willing to listen to anyone. Quite a change since then. Chief Wingert very much demonstrates his power over the people, not power within the people.
All right, we're gonna move on to P. P, Emily Gibson, regarding COVID precautions.
Hello, my name is Emily Gibson. I live in Des Moines, and I work here as an ICU nurse, and I am actually currently at home quarantined with my family, recovering from COVID. Um, I have been very fortunate to have mild symptoms, but I am just one of many of my coworkers who have been ill with COVID. Um, and we, we need your help. Uh, healthcare workers need your help. We need you to stand up, um, and show your leadership to help stop community spread here in, in Des Moines and in Iowa. Uh, we need a clear and concise message, which I am not hearing from our local leaders. Um, we need you to lean on the governor and make sure that the message is clear, and people aren't confused about the precautions they should be taking, or whether or not COVID is a deadly disease.
Lori Young, regarding Marijuana Task Force.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, thank you. I'm Lori Young, and I'm, I'm a member of Iowa CCI's Racial Justice Team. I want to talk about the great recommendations that the Marijuana Task Force put forth. They did a great job, their recommendations are solid, and should be taken seriously and adopted. My hope is that their work doesn't go to the task force graveyard, never to be heard about again. Here's a thought, do taxpayers realize how much money is spent chasing down recreational amounts of weed? How many hours are spent ruining the lives of too many black and brown citizens for such trivial pursuits? City council, how about you compare the thousands of stops and dozens of arrests and the paltry amount of weed confiscated to the amount of money and hours spent to uncover personal usage levels of weed? Chief Wingert, on the record, downplayed the Marijuana Task Force recommendations while blowing off the-
Viola Perry, regarding the work of the Marijuana Task Force.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Viola, I got you.
Okay. Viola Perry's CCI Racial Justice Team. It was apparent that the Marijuana Task Force put in a lot of time and effort to decriminalize marijuana that disproportionately affect black people, it being one of the six points in CCI Racial Profiling ordinance from twenty eighteen. Chief Wingert used his power to dismiss and disregard the task force. So how does power look from the council side? Well, you formed a task force, check. Thank task force for recommendations, check. No police presence required at these meetings, check. Police chief takes orders from legislature, not city council. Know this, power can corrupt and divide, but good power unite and create. So mayor, county, council members, Mandelbaum and Gray, as well as Chief Wingert, let's talk. You receive a formal request by email to meet with the community and CCI December fifteenth five thirty. Thank you.
Indira Schumaker, regarding the Des Moines City Council's enact- Indira?
Hello.
Hello.
L Merle Deek Myers ninety, Iowa City. Lynn Charles Nyber eighty-three, Cedar Rapids. Linda Nassif seventy-six, Cedar Rapids. Kenneth G Nation Senior seventy-three, Wapello. Lola Nelson eighty-six, Ollie. Brent B Newton fifty, Fort Dodge. Jeanette L Green ninety-two, Davenport. George Grub sixty-eight, Des Moines. James Lynn Pete Hall seventy-two, Wapello. Paul N Hanson eighty-two, Cedar Rapids. Mildred N Harmon one hundred and eight, Windsor Heights. Therese J Harney seventy-three, Iowa City. Tramita Harrison ninety-one, Cedar Rapids. Paul G Haywood sixty-two, Waterloo. Geraldine Jerry Marie Hearn ninety-three, Marion. Richard Hagan seventy-two, Des Moines. Manfred Joseph Hepke eighty-four, Manchester. James Dale Herbert Senior seventy-seven, Muscatine. Lucille-
Move on to you, Luke Bascom, regarding COVID nineteen spread in Des Moines. Luke?
Arlen Hess eighty-seven, Johnston. Thelma M Hiddlebow ninety-three, Muscatine. Harold D Handraker eighty, Forest City. Donald Hohnbaum eighty-nine, West Des Moines. Ronald Eugene Holdsworth sixty-two, Fort Dodge. Sister Anella Holtcamp one hundred two, Saint Paul. Alice Van Hooser one hundred two, Waterloo. Myron James. John A Veluxix Junior seventy-six, Sioux City. Axel Kabea thirty-five, Waterloo. Bianze Kunin sixty-nine, Sioux City. Elizabeth Betty Klein eighty-one, Iowa City. Raymond Clint ninety-four, Pella. Norma J Knight ninety-three, Des Moines. Tricia Larson fifty-five, Fort Dodge. Janelle Shimon-
Arley Boldridge, regarding COVID nineteen policies in Des Moines. Yep.
Great, um, I just wanted to lift up something that you actually said yourself, mayor, county. You said that COVID doesn't care that Thanksgiving is Thursday, but the only thing we've seen for the past, what, eight months, is actually that this council doesn't care about the coronavirus, or the thousands of people that have died from it in this country, let alone the hundreds in our community here. I ask you, what good is revisiting our mask mandate when hundreds of the city's most mobile occupants are excused from it? And I'm referring to the Des Moines Police Department, the fascist pigs that keep spreading this virus across our communities and remain unchecked by you and other members of this council. I ask you, what good is personal responsibility when this council actually funds and increases funding, um, the spread of COVID nineteen in our communities, businesses, and in our homes? As we saw last week, we allowed cops and federal agents to enter and spread COVID into people's personal homes. Weekly, there are spreading of COVID by these same officers and the camps of our houseless people, our neighbors here in Des Moines, and yet this council-
Nick Manna, regarding police accountability. Nick?
Your Honor, I can't find that he's here.
Okay. Nellie Moranchal, regarding COVID in schools.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Nellie Moranchal, I'm a resident of the city of Des Moines, Iowa. I am eleven years old. I will continue with remembering those who have lost due to our, our local government's indication. Antonia C Leon ninety-four, Valley Junction. Willer Levy seventy-three, Waterloo. Bernard Bernie Lee Lindstrom eighty, Wheatland. Emma Lonehand ninety-seven, Wheatland. Mary Jill-
Fuck. No, you're fine, you're good. Keep going, babe. You're good, you're good. Look, everyone in the chat's saying, "Good job." Keep going.
I'm gonna speak for my daughter because you all give her anxiety. Um, Mary Jill Long seventy-nine, Dubuque. E Jo Anne Lutz eighty-four, Des Moines. Marilyn-
Amanda Johnson, regarding a mask mandate.
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, Amanda, she/her. I wanted to point out that, again, city council rules have changed, and remind you, official rules require the mayor has to let a speaker finish their comment before ruling germane. As others have pointed out, your residents are trying to pay respect to the over two thousand Iowans that have died, and that was ruled germane. You, you literally just humiliated an eleven-year-old so nervously that she got scared to speak to you. I like, am so just jarred right now at how inappropriate and awful and disrespectful this is, um, to people like Marilyn Luis Markman ninety, Des Moines. Jose Gabriel Martinez fifty-eight, West Liberty. Ed McLimit eighty-six, Iowa City. Timothy Lewis McGee Junior forty-eight, Fort Dodge. Barbara Brennan sixty-one, Fairbank. Hong-
Danley Ross, regarding the mask mandate. Danley?
No, I did not find him.
Okay. Let's move on to Peyton Schumaker, regarding what the city should be doing. Peyton? There you are.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so my topic is what the city council should be doing, and what the city council should be doing is responding to COVID nineteen. You had said at one of your work sessions that we all heard you laughing about how hard it is to get a COVID test, that you would be doing something about it after the mayor released her recommendations on that day, which the governor released recommendations on that day, which were literally nothing, so you need to do something about this. And I'm gonna continue to list the names of people who have died from COVID. Uh, Ray Buster Nielsen ninety-three, Des Moines. Russell A Nielsen ninety-six, Cedar Falls. Betty Jean O'Connor eighty-six, Des Moines. James M Orr fifty-three, Charles City. Jim Orvis sixty-five, Waterloo. Mary Ann Ott ninety-three, Davenport. Zachary Scoot Overe thirty-five, North English. John N Perica forty-one, Waterloo. Frank Parks ninety-one, Atum.
Katie Menke, regarding silencing of constituents and city council behavior. Katie?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Des Moines City Council, you are failing the future city council members yet to come by your outdated mindset and spilling your personal opinions into your elected official positions that you hold. I suggest that you hire the Iowa Coalition for Collective Change to better educate yourselves on how to stop oppressing minorities, and to learn to better communicate with your constituents. Your oppression seeps racism all over the airways each time you continue to interrupt your constituents when they call in to share their concerns. Instead of focusing on their concerns, you focus on how their concerns are being presented. Would it make any difference if someone was to call in and to say, "It really big birds me off when I want to talk with you about the way that the Des Moines Police Department racially profiles black youth?" Does that really make much of a big difference? If you say yes, then you clearly are proving my point. It's time that you catch up with the current mindset, get some training, start showing unconditional concern, listen to constituents, and stop interrupting. Also, I want to apologize to all of those that have been silenced tonight.
Time.
Thank you.
Giovanni Mayena, regarding the city's COVID response. Giovanni? Giovanni, it looks like your mic's open. Hello?
There we are. During this meeting, we have been reading off the names of roughly three hundred people that have died due to COVID, due to the inaction of the state and the inaction of the city. There's three hundred out of almost over twenty-one hundred simultaneously. First, they came for the socialists, I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. Martin Naimouler, the action of the police and federal agents in this community the past week is creating a horrifying situation for your constituents. You all need to take action and do better. You're welcome for my time. You all need to take action and do better. You're welcome for my time.
Sarah Feldman regarding community input.
Hi, can you hear me? Great. My name is Sarah. My pronouns are she, they. I know that you don't think public comments are germane when people voice their concerns about development, aka gentrification projects, and the subsequent increase in policing it will have in our communities. I know that you hate when we read the names of people who died during your inaction from COVID, when they bring up the racist practices of the MPD, or when we're concerned about gentrification and the violence it will do to our communities. You love to call these comments not germane. It's a topic on the agenda, and that just shows that you don't understand how systematic and institutional racism works. Our concerns about people dying during this pandemic, healthlessness crisis, and violent policing by DMPD are germane to all topics. Just because the wording does not match your agenda wording does not mean that the concerns we express are not germane because all these topics are rooted in colonial and racial violence. You clearly do not understand how dangerous gentrification and its subsequent increased policing practices will be to our community. Also, stop using the word citizen. Use constituent or community member.
Time.
All right, I want to thank all of our citizens for taking their time to register to speak regarding
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I got an email from Denver saying that she only spoke once and did not understand why she was not allowed to speak in this portion of the meeting and wanted to pass that concern on to you.
Okay, well, we, her comments, I think, were disruptive. And we set as such, when we had to put her into the disruptive list. So again, I want to thank our citizens for taking the time to participate in this council meeting. I will say for those that are concerned about COVID, this city council is also we are one of the first cities in the state to issue a mask mandate. Now, there are totals in, I believe, there's either six or seven cities and towns that have it. And there's, I think, four counties that have it. We need to do more. We need to all make sure we follow CDC guidelines. We need to wash up, social distance, stay out of large crowds, and wear a mask. We can get through this. But it's only together that we're gonna make it happen. Thank you all. I hope that you have a safe, although distant, Thanksgiving. And wish you all the best. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.